Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands by a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I forgot to call the meeting to order. Sorry, guys. Uh, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven oh three P M.
We knew what you meant.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Agenda is approved. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Uh, for tonight's presentations, we have employee awards. Uh, will Ron please come up and do presentations?
Thank you, Mayor Council, uh, City Administrator Ron Harding. Uh, so just tonight, the every, every year, uh, we try to um uh, recognize employees within the city for either their longevity or their outstanding achievements. And so we've got a series of recognitions uh, for you tonight. Didn't see Brenda here. So Brenda Campbell, uh, she's our uh, court clerk. As police support specialist, she's celebrating her ten year anniversary. Um, so I think just congratulate Brenda for ten years with the city. And then I, I think we'll call our public works director, Steve Osley up and so we've been fortunate in the city that we get to present a lot of longevity awards. I think sixteen years is our average tenure here at the city, but tonight I think we get to do something a bit special because the public works director is celebrating his thirty-fifth year with the city. And so I'm going to present this to Steve and I have to tell you, Steve has seen so much in the city. He knows where everything is. And I was telling him today, um, the wealth of knowledge and experience he has is too valuable to to lose. So we're not going to let him retire for a while. So, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Can I say something, Steve?
Matt and I were talking this afternoon. We go like, we're on call like twenty-four seven, so that's more like a hundred and five years.
Does that go into your retirement?
It's, it's so much fun to be here every day. You know, get to be a plumber, an electrician. Oops, can't be an electrician.
Not without a permit.
Um, you know, playing in parks, you know, take care of the parks, you know, taking care of the equipment, uh, the new wastewater plant coming on, gonna be going on and the water treatment plant. It's just so much fun to see all this stuff going on, mods, the, you know, all the work down the park. I just, every day is just something different and, you know, I wish everybody could experience the same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
So, I just, I just want to tell everybody, you, you know, if you, if you just want to be entertained, pick Steve out for lunch and let him tell you some stories because he's got, he's got a lot of them and they're very interesting. I don't, don't know how many of them true, but he does have a lot. Thank you, Steve. Let me, let me give you this. Wow, thirty-five years. That's a lot. Thank you.
Lot of institutional knowledge.
All right, now we're going to call our employee of the year up, and I think the chief is going to help me. Chief, you're going to help me with this one. We're going to kind of tag team this one. Um, so, uh, each year the department heads get together and we, uh, uh, select an employee of the year and it's typically a bit of a process where we kind of go back and forth on the merits of a particular individual, but it was, it was interesting. This year we all, I think, uh, came up with the same name. So we didn't really have to, we didn't really have a lot of debate about it. It was actually quite a straightforward process. And so, um, our employee of the year is Angela Robinson. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about, uh, the work that Angela does. She's, she's, uh, one of our officers, obviously, but she assumes a lot of um, other duties. She works with a lot of our events. She works in the schools. Uh, we get a lot of positive feedback from her interaction. Um, because of the way she, she talks to people in the community, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's the way we want a community officer, a community resource officer to interact with the community and apply, and provide that community pleasing that we talk about all the time that we're trying to do. And that is forming partnerships and she really does work at, at that. One of the other standout qualities is, uh, Angela does a good job coordinating between city departments. And for years, we've talked about breaking this culture of these individual departments down uh, in the community and, uh, you know, depending on where you came from, what police department, that's kind of it's part of, part of the police culture, but we've really worked on that. Angela's been a big part of that. And so I feel like uh, the city's really grown as a team. We've really worked a lot together and, um, part of that is just the relationship that she's built across various departments in the city. So I'm happy, uh, very proud to award this recognition for you.
Thank you very much.
Well, now I'm going to let the chief do this one. All right.
All right. So we've been doing Officer of the Year awards for several years, I think back to twenty fifteen. And we were getting to a spot where we wanted to kind of take that away and just do an op, or Employee of the Year award. So the Officer of the Year award is not to really take away from this Employee of the Year award. It's more of, we have a plaque started on the PD and our PD actually kind of competes over who's going to get this award each year. So they kind of do take it seriously in a way. So we wanted to keep that, uh, process going. So obviously with what has just been said, our Officer of the Year award is also going to be Angela. So if you can come up here again. To expand on the reasons for this, uh, it starts from the Community Resource Officer position. Uh, many of you know, I was a Community Resource Officer when I started in two thousand six and have been so for years up until I became sergeant and I still maintained that title. Unfortunately, she made me look like I didn't know what I was doing. Uh, because she is doing a great job with communicating with the public and communicating with other staff, um, outside like Public Works and City Hall. So, thank you, guys. Um, but she has really mended us all together. So, um, with that, I don't know if you guys heard, but the CPR classes that we're starting to give free to the public, uh, it was one of her big front runners that she wants to be a part of, and it's just another way for us to bring the community together and that's what we're after. So with that. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I hate to do this, but can we have Steve come back up so I can get a picture?
Um, so that concludes the, uh, employee recognitions. I, I would like to just say that, um, I think we've got a great team right now. I'm as proud of this team as I've ever been. Uh, the police department is just doing a stellar job under Damian's leadership. Uh, we've completed most of our yearly evaluations and what I can tell you is, uh, everybody, our, our, our city as a whole is, is firing on, on all cylinders right now. They're doing a great job.
Did we, did we get a picture of Steve? We did. No, can we, can we do it?
Let's get, let's get a picture with the council in the background. How's that sound? We'll do one here.
That's the one that goes in the newsletter. Come on, Steve.
Let's all stand.
Don't stand in front of me because you're tall.
Scoot back a little bit, Steve. Walk around here. There you go. Go in the middle, next to the mayor.
Thank you.
You know, I'd be like that.
There you go. Do you want one of Angela's? Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that has signed up for public comment? No one on Zoom. Okay. Um, and then is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Okay.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I will abstain because I wasn't here at the last meeting. So the consent agenda is approved. Uh, moving on to public hearings tonight, there are no public hearings. There is no old business. Uh, moving on to new business, we have the twenty twenty-four T M L D, T M D L update and annual report. Uh, we will invite, um, Matt to come up.
Good evening. Uh, Matt Etzel, Assistant Public Works Director. Uh, before you is our two thousand twenty-four TMDL report. Uh, this is an annual report that we have to submit, um, for store, our stormwater reporting. Um, some things that you will see in there are we have come up with a draft ordinance for the stormwater, uh, something we've been talking about for a couple of years. Uh, as a new requirement in this cycles, uh, matrix that we have a stormwater ordinance that we can, um, fall back on for enforcement. Um, if someone's polluting our waterways or we're having any issues with illicit discharge, it gives us the ability to, um, enforce, uh, penalties upon those people. For the most part, a lot of it's, uh, our normal operation stuff, planting trees that goes towards temperature, the dog bags that you guys see at the park for picking up after your pets, that, that goes towards our, um, bacteria limits. Um, there's a lot of it's just normal operation stuff, but, um, it's stuff that we have to report on every year and let DEQ know that we're continuing to do these things, uh, to protect stormwater. There's also a note in there and in the staff report that, uh, staff will probably be coming to council with a recommendation of some sort of stormwater fee. Uh, part of the plan, if you look in some of the measures and, and things that they, they would like done is um, they would like the TMDL to have its own funding source or stormwater to have its own funding source. Right now we take from like our parks maintenance and street maintenance. And when we do that, it kind of robs from those other uh, funds that we can't do the maintenance requirements that we need to do with those funds. So having a separate source to fund some of these, uh, stormwater projects is what DEQ is really looking for. So we will probably bring some recommendations on an amount and how we came up with that. Um, along with the, um, stormwater ordinance draft, we'll bring that to council and let council review that before, before we vote on it. Happy to answer any questions or?
So will that, um, utility fee be billed along with our water and sewer?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the plan. That's what other cities have done. Um, again, we're going to have to come up with a way to structure it and a, a reason behind how much, you know, the city is going to charge for that, but those are all conversations that we have to have in the next couple of years because it's part of this planning cycle that goes from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight. It's a, it's a requirement that DEQ's given us that we have to find a way to fund some of these, these activities.
And the reality is under working budget law, we're actually supposed to align those expenditures. Uh, some of those other funds are dedicated funds and they're related to stormwater, so we can kind of get away with using those, but they really would like, like us to have its own uh, budget line tied to each of those stormwater elements. So it's just moving our city. It's, uh, we get bigger, we want to be more structured and follow those things a bit closer to the intent. So.
I think as we, we move forward with that, I think it's, it's related but not related. Like we really should consider changing the name of our utility bill. Um, because we're going to have several things billed on there. It's, it's really, I don't know, we've talked about it before, like maybe city services or um, that bill is not just your water bill. It's, 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 it's going to be three or four different utilities and services that are going to be going out in one bill or one mailing.
No, I think, I think that's a great suggestion and observation.
Another thing that, you know, we've done to try to limit how much it would affect the residents is anytime there's a new development, we've required that the developer take, take charge of their stormwater facilities. So we've like just recently with the Clover Court subdivision, we've, there had to be a stormwater detention basin and we've said, okay, the developer or whoever's managing that prop, that property, you guys are responsible for that because it's, it's more expensive than people think. They see this basin with grass, but you're having to go out and mow it on a regular basis. You're having to take care of it and, and it's, we've gone to a couple of different classes and it's, you know, three to five thousand dollars a year or more just for like the smaller ones. So some of our bigger city lot size ones, you know, could be upwards of ten thousand dollars a year to maintain. We need to talk about staff time and uh, materials to take the, to maintain those facilities. So.
That was one of the council's, uh, policy changes when we adopted those overriding policies since April, April.
Yeah.
That was one of the policies that came from that overriding policy. And that was the city would no longer accept, uh, private stormwater facilities.
I remember that. Was there anything else?
Yeah, there's no, there's no action on this, but we just wanted council to be aware of a plan that we were submitting um, to DEQ and so that you guys are kept up to speed on it. It's actually also one of the requirements that we regularly update you guys on what we're doing with the stormwater. So.
Thank you.
Right?
Thank you. Nice job, but you sure know how to clear a room.
The minute we start talking about more bills, everyone's like, I'm out. Well, moving on to city administrator report, let's see how short Ron keeps it.
Yeah.
It's going to be fairly quick because I sent it to you in advance and I also put a copy on your desk. Uh, so most of the things in here, I, I'm not going to cover. I, I do want to cover that we did put in a, a BOPA waiver request. Uh, we don't know what the processing process of that would be. Uh, and, and this is for the, sorry, this is for the wastewater uh, treatment facility. Uh, so we're hoping to get that, uh, approved at some point and that will, uh, should cut down on the cost of the overall facility. So that's kind of the main thing. We did get our, uh, audit completed. Uh, I have it right here. If anybody wants, uh, to see it, it'll be at City Hall and you can come review it. If you want an electronic copy, I can send you one. I just didn't want to print one up if you weren't interested in all of the audit jargon, but the, the cover page is the one that we're really interested in, which says that we have operated the city under, uh, all of the financial um, procedures and regulations required by uh, the state of Oregon and, uh, we haven't received any audit findings. So we've got a clean audit again this year. Uh, so that's the good thing about that. And then, um, already talked about water, water day at the Capitol. We sent on an email. If you wanted to go, just know if you go. I think there's going to be, uh, some interesting, uh, discussions that day. So I think it'd be great if, if a couple of you can go, and I think a, a few of you said that you will go. Uh, we do have a four million dollar, um, uh, grant application in with the Water Caucus Committee who are leading the Capitol Facility um, funding package. Uh, and it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant, three and a half, or five hundred thousand dollar match with a three and a half million dollar grant. So a four million dollar total project. Now, we didn't get project specific numbers. We use rough engineering numbers for that. If we get the grant, uh, we'll be coming back and talking to you about the best ways uh, or the most strategic way to try to get the biggest return for that money. Uh, so we'll come back and talk to you about it. And then, um, I just want to let council know we're, we're, we're just under the one percent trigger to change colas. So we are planning our budgets with the four percent colo again this year. I, I feel next year that will go beyond the one percent. Um, but right now it's, it's just under that. Uh, so that's, so we're planning that for our budget appropriation. And then in your packet, I just got this today, but I wanted to bring it forward. Um, and this is a request to provide a letter of support for House Bill uh, three thirty-six sixty-six. Um, I included the bill, uh, printed up for you so you could read it in its entirety, but it actually sounds like a good initiative, uh, which it seems like, um, what the state's proposing in this bill is to structure some sort of safety protocols. Uh, that if power companies follow those safety protocols, they can limit some of their legal liability if there's a wildfire. I think there's a lot of concern with power companies that just because there's a wildfire, they're being you know, kind of held responsible for all the damage caused by the wildfire and, you know, they don't even know if it's necessarily always caused by their lines, uh, uh, but they're facing a lot of litigation. That litigation just ends up coming back to us in the form of rates. And so, um, I think it would be great if they develop some sort of, uh, safety protocols. And it, and if they had that outlined and it was universal and all the power companies were following it, um, it probably would, would make the wildfire destruction less prominent.
I think this stems from, there was a lot of controversy over the power lines not being underground and you know, could that have reduced the amount of spread that happened? Um, so.
Yeah. And you know, this is the debate that's been going on for a long time with undergrounding power lines. One, it's extremely costly. The power companies, and I'm not an expert on power, but apparently the lines generate heat. And it's, it's difficult to underground main lines, I guess. That's what they've said in the past. Um, and I can't imagine grounding undergrounding lines all the way, let, let's say up the canyon. It would just be a a cost prohibitive venture. So, so probably the best secondary option would be some sort of a certified protocol for safety operations. And so that's what this does. I need your guidance on if we can support this. I can't do it without your your support just because it's a legislative bill. If it was a bill for a letter of support for a grant or something, I would just typically sign those. But um, this one, I think we would need, uh, your authorization to support it for them.
You guys have an opinion?
I think it'd be a great idea to support because anything we can do to lessen citizens' risks is a good thing.
I, I'm in favor for it. We can write a letter.
Excellent. And then my closing remarks, my final remarks. So I've, I heard three, but is there, I think I need one more. Okay. Okay, good. Uh, my closing remarks is I may or may not be available on the twenty-fourth because I will be on vacation during that day.
Will not be available for twenty-fourth.
Well, I may be available because I may get bored and want to, and want to sit in, but, but I just wanted
Permission to miss.
I wanted you to know if I, if I can't make it, could I please be excused for that day?
Uh, you, yeah, you should be on vacation.
The vacation approval is an excuse to be excused.
Enjoy your vacation. Your force is accused.
All right. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions if you guys have.
Oh. Um, on, on this, well, I guess it goes under mail, like cancer report. I mean, I was reading, um, the wastewater project. So we did have, um, I, I dropped in on both of those. I, I know there all of us attended or most of us attended, either one or the other. I was really concerned with the low turnout. Um, for me, when it comes to engage in the community, it's, it's, did we do everything possible so that when people come up and say my water bill just went up thirty-six dollars and no one talked to me about it? Um, I know that at one point we had talked about just putting some sort of information in our utility bills and mailing them out.
We did.
We did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're going to send out, uh, probably in April, we're going to send out a, a letter which we're, we're publishing, we're republishing the article you and I wrote in this month's newsletter. Um, I won't be here, but the only thing we need to make sure is that it's, we take out the town hall discussion. I didn't get to tell you that.
Can we also send it to our town? Because there's people that don't read our newsletter, but they read our town.
Yeah. And, and we're also going to send that out, uh, with a little bit, a little bit more information on it. Uh, in a, in a separate mailing to the community. So we've done, we've done town halls, we've done petitions. We've done, um, multiple newsletter articles. We have done newspaper articles. Um, we've done notices in the utility bill and then we're going to send out a separate mailing. So, I mean, we've done a fairly comprehensive. And remember, this has been going on for years. So, you know, we've done the uh, neighborhood block party discussions and there is really a lot of information. I, I was expecting more people to show up to the town halls. We are going to do another one in April that, uh, a local youth is going to host and he's going to give the presentation. Um, basically he's going to take my presentation and, and give the information geared towards, uh, young adults in the community. And
Can we put a flyer together and hand it out at Easter?
Sure.
It's going in the States Journal again. Can we find out from Billy? I wonder when the article's going to round. It's going to be.
He's waiting until we get closer to council to take, my understanding.
We're going to do, how we're going to implement the.
At one point we just need to decide. I mean, um, but ideally that, that decision should be, I mean, we should be getting as much feedback as possible.
It's going to be your first meeting in May.
Okay.
Uh, because we have to have it, uh, at least thirty days in advance of implementation.
Needs to be decided by May. Yeah. Okay. Um, the other question I had was like, I'm signed up for it, but I didn't get anything. Are we utilizing the text.gov for that information last?
Yeah, yeah. We get, we actually get, uh, uh, when we set that up, we actually got um, a number of pre, a, 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 a set amount of pre-assigned known numbers that they had in our area. So there's a, a fairly robust list. I don't think we've had a lot of people organically sign, like just seen it and then signed up, but we do have that list that they populated for us. So we can certainly send stuff out through there.
Might want to put that in the newsletter again in case people didn't.
I think it's in every issue.
You've got a website and you have to X out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, not everyone goes to the website. Yeah.
It's like, I know.
So there's, there's lots of vehicles to get that information.
And then, uh, we talked about water day at the Capitol. So water day at the Capitol is also the day that we're having Marion County, um, meet over here at All Good Things. Uh, I've asked for the day off. Um, there's a lot of things going on, like you said, with water. Uh, my plan for that day is I am, I'm going to be there in the morning and then I'm going to rush back over here for an hour and then go back. Um, so, but I would, I would love to see other council, um, participate here at All Good Things when we have our meetings here, not just, not just all of you guys are available.
And that's breakfast with the county commissioners.
Actually lunch this time.
Oh, lunch this time? I'm sorry.
If it was breakfast, I could be there, but lunch I cannot.
Okay. Well, it's lunch with the county commissioners and, and, uh,
What about Thai box? Sidebar, I mean, crosswalks.
And I know council wanted to bring up just a couple of the And I know council wanted to bring up just a couple of the, you know, uh I mean, it's usually a group of other people from other neighboring cities, but you know, I don't think it hurts to talk about, hey, is there a way we could try to figure something else out with sidewalks approval or?
Well, they do give us a time for each city to say a little bit for any person that's there and Angie and I hit it every time we can be there.
Yeah. And I I found
I think I'm gonna make a shirt that says where are the crosswalks?
I think the, I I've found the county commissioners usually really uh receptive in that format, so.
Those are the, those are the comments I have on.
I have one question. And you mentioned, I think it was time before last, that you're gonna try to have an executive session. It kind of gives an update on the Comcast.
Yeah.
When I'm a Comcast.
It's still in flux. Uh, I thought we were gonna get to a point where we could have a discussion, but we're not there yet. Uh, we're we we've pretty much uh ended negotiations, so I don't see them at least wanting to pursue that in the near future, but there are some loose ends we have to tie up associated with that. Um, and uh it's 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 just created a a little bit of a difficult situation and I'll need I'll need your guidance, but uh it would be premature at this point. There's they're they're still trying to address some of the issues and then if they can't address those, then we'll come to council and talk about what we need to do.
Expecting us to move on that. It kind of seems like it's just the old mayor's out there on social media making some threats.
I think
Something happen.
Yeah, I think uh I think Comcast has basically announced that they're not coming and there's been multiple uh chains on social media that they're not coming and how people feel about that. Um, so they're out there. I will tell you that um it's good and it's 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 always good and it's bad. So it's nice to have a service provider, but um I think uh my description of negotiations is also the way that they provide. Uh, you know, can sometimes go into
I think it's really
Providing services.
I think it's really easy for rumors to run around the community, and so that's why it's still being talked about.
Yeah.
Um, and I mean, from the beginning, you've known I've wanted, like, I I've been interested in Comcast and it's not really about, it's not really about um making money or anything. It's about having options for the community and um because, you know, like we've talked about, if there's a thousand hookups, we're just spreading a thousand hookups between two companies. So, um but
But we don't want to lose money. That would be, that would be subsidizing growth. And that would go against our overriding policy. And that was the issue that we had. They did, they 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 didn't want to conform to the same requirements of other franchisees in the city, so how do we treat them differently than the other franchisees? We weren't asking them to do anything more. Um, as a matter of fact, we were accepting somewhat less, but not nothing. Uh, and that was the issue. And so uh, I I think one is it would be difficult for us uh to defend our current franchisees if we did that with an additional one. And if you remember right, part of our whole uh realignment, when we did that readjust, we talked about this at our uh retreat and we changed policies like the one we talked about earlier with stormwater. One of the things we said is we are gonna realign franchise agreements and lease agreements so that they are uh equal and competitive and not one's getting a much better deal than another. Um, and we had a lot of those and every time ones uh come due, we've realigned those and adjusted those to the higher or the the more current franchises to equalize it. And so we'd be literally going back and eroding all that work to follow what they'd asked us to do. The mayor and I had a great conversation in a meeting after uh council gave us direction with their representatives and um it, the ball was completely in their court. We we gave them we addressed all their issues and we gave them the ability to address their issues and accept the terms and they just simply didn't want to.
I would, yeah, I was surprised. I was surprised of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I the the conversation that we had, like I said, I was surprised that they decided not to move. Um, so anything else before we move on? Okay.
Where are we at?
We are moving on to mayor and counselor reports. Anyone have anything to report?
I do. Um, we have new leadership at SCATS and M WAC, so Lyle Morthorst, county commissioner is the chairman of both committees now. As Kaiser chose to not have their mayor represent them on the committees. And the other um and Woods did not run for reelection and so he was not eligible. And I've had a long conversation with Lyle in regards to our membership on SCATS and he's hoping that we'll have consensus and we'll be voted in by April.
And then we'll be able to have votes and submit requests.
Also a five hundred dollar bill.
For
For membership of
For you guys that don't know, like, we're in limbo with SCATS because, you know, we are told that we are now part of this. Um, but even though, like, they have to have this agenda where they vote a sin and we're able to vote. So if we have a project, we can't submit anything because technically we haven't been voted in and we and we
We have to do it through Marion County Public Works in order to submit a project.
We lose our voice at the table by relying on somebody else. And even though we're being told that we have to be a part of SCATS. And it's just been a really long process. So we're in limbo. And we lose out on federal funding being in this gray area. So, or federal oppor- opportunities for funding. So that's why we keep on circling back to it. Uh, for myself, um, I just want to thank everyone that picked up the slack flag was gone six weeks. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to completely disengage and heal. When we volunteer, we give like a hundred and ten percent and um, I did come back. Uh, uh, today is officially my my first day back, a hundred percent at work and in the city. Um, so you guys can text and email me now. And then um I did go to a meeting, uh I was invited up to a meeting with all the mayors from the canyon this last week regarding the basin drainage. Um, I believe in including Salem and Kaiser showed up and staff from our federal representatives show up. Um, there was only three cities that weren't able to make it because they had conflicts. Um, and basically what the canyon is asking is uh for support on what is going to happen, um, not just along the canyon, but um, the farmlands, fire risks, uh they're talking about draining Detroit annually, really, really low. And what is that going to do to small cities? And there's a lot of questions that came out of that meeting. Uh, one of the things that they did say is that they would like to do a joint letter and asked all the city councils to sign on to that. And I told them that anything that we sign on as a council, we would have to see the letter and approve uh. But anyone that is interested in supporting that cause on their own, you guys can do. I I do that sometimes. Um. I also submitted a formal testimony for House Bill forty nine oh one. And I submitted a letter to Senator Gerard as well. Um. So those we have on file, if you guys ever want to submit a formal testimony, need help writing that, um, I'm more than happy to help. And Ron's really good at coming up with them too. Um. It just goes in like to introduce yourself and you put in the ask and the reasons and how it affects specifically Almswell or the reasons that you're supporting it. Those public testimonies are really, really important. Right now, the legislative session has been inundated with a ton of bills. Uh, LOC has legislative updates every Friday. It should be in your emails. If you don't have those links, I can send them to you. Um, there's a lot of things that are probably gonna get missed, but if there's anything that you guys feel that we should be looking out that might impact Almsville either directly or indirectly, like just just I get so that we can look at it and discuss it like like this, right? Because this affects our families of of the canyon. Um, I think that's all that I have to report.
So the lunch is on the twentieth, right?
Yes, lunch is on the twentieth. That's also Water Day.
I can, I can come to the lunch.
The lunch, okay.
That's the day at the Capitol. Start right at noon?
Yeah, twelve to one. What was that, King?
It is also the same day of that legal training that
Yes. That legal is that during the day?
It's that day as well.
Is it during the day or in the evening?
Don't remember. A very busy day though.
Yep, March twentieth at two P M.
And then that's through the LOC, right?
That is through our law firm, B E H.
Okay, B H. Then
There is an opportunity if you can't make that presentation that they're gonna have for you to watch it on like a YouTube link. So they will publish it. So if you can't make that um uh, you just have to be able to say on your form that you've completed the training. There's not a certificate to you yet, uh, but they will make that available.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything for good of the order? Uh, there are no correspondence in our packet. There is no executive session. So we can go ahead and adj- adjourn our meeting at seven forty four P M.